On behalf of the League of Women Voters, St. Cloud area, welcome to this forum featuring candidates for the St. Cloud City Council. Thank you, candidates, for attending and participating in this event. We thank the city of St. Cloud administrative staff for making arrangements to meet in the council chambers. We are recording this forum and will upload it to our YouTube channel. A link to the recording will be put on our website. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. This means we do not support or oppose particular political parties or individual candidates, but we do study and take positions on issues. We sponsor candidate forums because we believe informed citizens are the foundation of democracy. I am Linda Salp, a member of the St. Cloud Area League, and I will moderate this forum. Susan Smith and Mary Margaret Bjorkland will be the timekeepers. We moderate candidate forums according to a standard protocol that is designed to be fair and open. The candidates have accepted the format in advance. Ordinarily, we invite audience members to ask questions. In 2020, due to safety concerns associated with COVID-19, this forum will not have an in-person audience. Instead, we solicited questions from the public and compiled questions in advance. Questions of a related nature have been condensed and combined. All questions asked will be relevant to specific issues the candidates would normally address as St. Cloud City Council members. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer all questions. Six candidates are vying for three at-large seats on the council. They are seated in alphabetical order by last name. Jeff Gerger, George Hontos, Buddy King, Carol Lewis, Natalie Ratha, and Hassan Youssef. The candidates' opening statements will be offered in the order they are seated. After that, the order for answering will be rotated in random order. All candidates will be invited to answer all questions. Candidates, you will each be allowed the following amounts of time: one minute for an opening statement, one and a half minutes to answer each question, and one minute for a closing statement at the end of the question and answering period. A timekeeper will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left. The red card that says "time" means finish your sentence and stop. The St. Cloud City Council has important responsibilities, including zoning regulations, the adoption of city ordinances and resolutions, adoption of the annual city budget, and confirmation of mayoral appointments. In addition, council members must regularly respond to the needs of their constituents. Candidates, for your opening statement, you will each have one minute to state why you are seeking the office of City Council member. We will begin with Jeff Gerger.
Well, thank you, Linda, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight to have an opportunity to express our views. My name is Jeff Gerger. I was born and raised in St. Cloud. I've worked in St. Cloud my entire life and raised my family here. My wife, Janelle, and I have three great kids, two daughters and a son, and my grandson, Jack. I have some concerns that COVID has caused differences in how we campaigned this year. So it's been, this is an opportunity that, you know, we're afforded that I really do appreciate. I do have some issues, and they're really the same issues that I ran for the first time in 2005 when I was first elected. Thank you.
George?
Thank you to the League for sponsoring this event again. I've lived in St. Cloud for over 41 years. I've owned and operated Hempsey's Deli and successfully sold it after 18 years of ownership. Then I went to work at Quiet Oaks Hospice House for four years as part of the management team developing operational procedures and as the house manager overseeing an eight-bed end-of-life facility. I retired in 2012. I've served on the YMCA board, the St. John's Boys Choir, and the Chamber of Commerce boards. I've served on numerous boards in the city, including the Airport Advisory Board, the Paramount Arts Board, the City Council Financial Policies Board, and I currently serve on the HRA Housing Rehab Authority Board for the last nine years. I have a firm understanding of how city government should work. Thank you.
Buddy?
Thank you, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Buddy King, and I have been a member of St. Cloud for the last 18 years. I'm a father. I am a pastor at a local church here, Jubilee Worship Center. I have five kids, seven grandkids. I have worked with the Boys and Girls Club for 18 years, and in that work, it has helped me get with families, learn families, build relationships with businesses, private and public sectors, and other organizations. If elected to office, I really hope to engage our youth more into the local civic government. I want to really tackle the downtown revitalization, and I also want to build more black businesses here in St. Cloud. Thank you for your time.
Carol?
Hi, my name is Carol Lewis, and I'm running for an at-large seat on the city council because I believe I bring a wealth of experience to the council. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and a special thank you to all those who submitted questions. Our democracy only works if citizens are engaged, and this is a perfect way for citizens to be involved. Thank you.
Natalie?
Hello, my name is Natalie Ratha. I have lived in St. Cloud since 2004. My foundation is with Milwaukee County Parks. I have a foundation serving the public with the county park system. Yeah, we came here in 2004 due to my husband's job. In St. Cloud, I have served as Executive Director of Visual Arts Minnesota and earned my master's degree in public administration with a concentration in local government. Due to these experiences, it's no mistake that I'm here, that I'm interested in local government. I feel my perspective can give a lot to the council, being a woman, representing Generation X, representing a mixed-race family, and representing the blue-collar worker. I am, for the last seven years, driving school buses for our community, so I know our streets very well.
Thank you. The first question... Oh, I'm so sorry!
Okay, Linda.
I'm so sorry, Youssef.
Thank you so much. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, the candidates, for being here. My name is Hassan Youssef. I've been a member of this community since 2001. I taught at Tech High School and I taught at Lincoln Elementary, so I'm a teacher, and I know our students. I know our community very well. I'm also an owner of a small business. I have a tax and immigration service business. I also had a restaurant a few months ago. So I've been part of this community for a long time. I care about this community, and that's why I'm running. I have children who were born here in St. Cloud. So this is my town, my home, my family. I have been here. This community has given me so much, so I want to give it back, and that's why I'm running. Thank you so much, Linda, and thank you so much for everyone.
And now, our first question. And Hassan, you will be answering first for this question. What do you think is the biggest challenge facing the city of St. Cloud? And what, if anything, can the city council do about it?
Thanks so much for that question. I think, to me, the biggest thing is bringing our city together, bringing our communities together, building peace, bringing the community together so that we can work for the better of our city. And I think another issue that really bothers me is the homelessness issue and affordable housing. So I think that is a big thing for me, and making sure that our community has enough affordable housing is a big thing for me. And so that's why I think that issue needs to be addressed by the council, and I'll work to address that issue. Thank you.
Carol?
Thank you. All right, the biggest issue facing the city of St. Cloud, well, it has to come down to the budget and the impact that COVID-19 has had on the budget. We have been able to manage the budget this year, but if we do not get any federal help, then I'm afraid next year's budget will not be very pretty to look at. And I don't even want to hazard a guess as to what the kind of cuts we're going to have to make look like. Another issue that I think facing St. Cloud is the strength of our neighborhoods. As a city council, we have been focused very intently on ensuring that our neighborhoods are strong, but it's something we can't just touch and go on. We have to keep that up because if we don't keep our neighborhoods strong, then we lose all sense of community. I purposely would like to enhance the community service part of the neighborhoods and get our various neighborhoods together, talking to one another, so we retain that small-town community feel that we once had. And I think that we can grow and develop as a well-rounded community by talking to one another and breaking bread. Thank you.
Natalie?
The biggest challenge facing our city is obviously COVID. Everyone has suffered a lot, and we're dealing with unprecedented challenges. One major thing that we're dealing with is school and work going online. I feel the need for everyone to have access to internet, whether it's free or at least affordable, if the city can help out in any way there. A second thing to help with our local economy, I think we have a lot of people who are interested in getting involved and helping out. We have a strong RSVP program for our senior community, organized by the city. I think we can extend that to families and teenagers who have time and who can build up our great city. Our nonprofits have been doing a wonderful job, and there's a lot of people, and we can help recover with community. Given my background in arts, I see arts initiatives as a great answer to revitalizing our economy, especially in the downtown area. There's a lot of closed storefronts and businesses suffering. We need to continue the message to shop local and support each other through these tough times.
Jeff?
Thank you. I think, for me, the biggest issue facing the city of St. Cloud is the budgetary problems because of the impact of COVID-19. Our income as a city has been diminished to the tune of several million dollars. So we have to deal with that in a way that has the least negative impact on our taxpayers and our constituency. The city has done a good job over the years. This year is going to be different. Our budget is going to need to be handled differently. We're going to have to do more prioritization to keep things moving that need to be done. Public safety is number one, always. Our road improvements, and then making the community welcoming and a great place for people to live in this community. Those are things that I think my years of experience on the council will be helpful with. I've earned the respect of my colleagues over the years and been city council president several times, which I currently am. So I think that kind of leadership is needed more now than ever. Thank you.
Buddy?
Thank you. I believe that one of the biggest challenges that we have as a community is our youth engaging. Engage in our youth, not only engaging them in local civic government, but also just engaging them in some of the rec programs that the city offers or engaging them in other opportunities so that they are more willing to stay here and grow their families here and not move away and do something different. I believe if we begin to engage these youth, if we can really start the pipeline, we can start growing our community. When we talk about neighborhoods, when we talk about diversity, St. Cloud as a community was awarded great awards for the work that they're doing and for a great place to live. And we have four institutions that are here, and there is no reason why we should not have more attractive cities. We want to break the white cloud break, and let's start saying, you know, we are one community, one group of people who are trying to live great lives with public safety, with happiness, and just doing other fun things. We need to grow more diverse businesses. We need more businesses, not only downtown, but just around town in general. We need a more group of diverse visiting, whether it's essential or specialty. We just need more businesses to be part of what we are doing. And thank you for your time for that.
George?
Well, I always kind of struggle with this because a council member has to be more than, cannot be just one dimensional person. And there's a lot of duties and tasks that come before us as priorities and challenges. But being an advocate for sound fiscal management of the taxpayers' dollars is a very important duty that I take seriously. Also, making our neighborhoods livable for everyone is no easy task, but it's a necessary goal. Increasing economic opportunities, increasing household income, and reducing poverty must be priorities. And so those are some areas that I would consider as being challenges for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, do you think that St. Cloud has adequate, affordable housing? Why or why not? And what role should the city council play, if any, in retaining and attracting affordable housing? And we will start with George.
Well, affordable housing's not such an easy task to take on. And anytime we talk about affordable housing, in my opinion, you have to talk about the household incomes because in St. Cloud, a single one-bedroom apartment rents for under $800 a month. And recently, we approved, some others on the council approved, a project, a low-income housing project in Shurburne County, and the starting rents were $1,100. So when we talk about affordable housing, we have to make sure that the public tax dollars are used properly. We have a lot, over 2,000 units that the HRA manages and serves for low-income housing. I think it's an important issue. It's something we have to talk about. And I think we have to be very smart how we handle it. We need the private sector to be involved in the discussions. Us here in the public sector don't have all the answers. But I think incomes are a big part of the discussion when we talk about affordable housing. Thank you.
Jeff?
Caught me by surprise there. Affordable housing is always an issue that is very difficult to handle. We have, over the years, the city of St. Cloud, with the approval of the city council, tried to keep the costs of homeownership as low as possible. We have some of the lowest rates in the area as far as water and sewer and the services that the city of St. Cloud provides. And that's something that I'm proud of as a city council person. Our HRA has programs that do, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the HRA, that try to help keep people in their homes. So when you talk about affordable housing, I think an individual or a couple who are in their 70s and have their house paid off and can stay in their home is, that's really affordable housing. They don't have to look for an apartment, move into other facilities. So there are programs that do a really good job with that. But I think as far as the city of St. Cloud goes, the opportunity to keep rates low, building costs low, and the fees that we charge for construction low is the best thing that we can do. Thank you.
Hassan?
Thank you so much for that question. In my opinion, I think we do have a problem with affordable housing, and there is not enough housing for many communities who want to make this their place. And I think the city needs to prioritize that, make it a priority. Then, when the city takes the lead, then it becomes easy to accomplish. I know it's very difficult, but if we say it's tough and hard and not able to be accomplished, then it takes a backstage. But when we make it a priority and make sure that there, we have a lot of families who are struggling to find affordable, decent homes, then it becomes easy for the council to work on it. So in my opinion, we do have a problem, and we need to prioritize it, make it a priority so that our communities can live comfortably and decently in homes. So thank you so much for the question, but we do have an issue of affordable housing. Thank you.
Buddy?
Thank you. So my answer is, we do have an affordable housing issue, but a better thing I would like to say is, we need to figure out how to afford housing. I think that if you look at the rental versus ownership that's happening here in St. Cloud, when we have residents that are trying to rent, there are a lot of barriers that are stopping them. And, you know, from a council standpoint, what is it that we can do that we can eliminate some of those barriers, whether it's work with other private organizations or whatever the case may be? When you look at income-based housing, obviously with COVID, that brings lots of challenges, but just in any normal basis, we have so many community members who are underemployed, who have huge families, and, you know, based on city inspections and the way that numbers work, housing is just not, it's not a real thing for them. So that would be the question, is how do we make sure that they can have housing? You know, is it tax breaks to different owners? What is it? And the last thing is possibly thinking about, you know, backgrounds. A lot of people made lots of mistakes when they was younger, and here they are trying to change their lives around, and their background is stopping them from getting into housing. And that's something else that I believe that, council, that's something we can look at and something that we can see what we can do to change. Thank you.
Carol?
Okay. At one of our recent council meetings, I asked Louise Reese, who is the head of the local HRA, what could we do about helping solve our homeless problem? And Louise basically told me that we need to have federal intervention, that essentially, the federal government has stopped helping communities put up housing for families, for people with low incomes, and they need to start again because it's getting to a critical juncture. The other part of it is that the federal government then has the wherewithal to have a reduced amount for, that a person's income would be like 30% for their housing. So then, we need to really be working with our federal legislators to get on the stick and get some investment in our communities so that we can solve some of these issues.
Natalie?
Affordable housing, I don't see it so much as a city issue. It does fall on our businesses and people who own apartments, people who run the banks with the interest rates or rejecting applicants, employers not paying enough for people to afford housing. There's not much the city can do. I'm happy to hear from Carol that there are federal programs. It'd be great to get St. Cloud involved in some of those. In my research, I've learned St. Cloud is nearly a quarter under the poverty line, and that's a lot. People are struggling in our community. Rent is very expensive. But, you know, people buy homes to rent them and properties to rent them. It's for profit. So I, as a city, I would call on each other to think of this 23% under the poverty line, to pay them what they should be paid and help our community out. People should not be homeless in 2020. Yeah, that's what I have to say, and thank you for the question.
Thank you. The next question is, what role does the city council have, if any, in implementing the community policing agreement? And we're going to start with you again, Natalie.
Thank you. The community policing agreement, well, the police and fire department are funded by the city. We give a good portion of our budget toward them because it is important. When you ask the community what they care about, it comes down to public safety. We want to feel safe in our community, and roads. Everyone wants good roads. I know very well, as a bus driver. So yes, I think the city should be at the table with a community policing agreement, also involving local groups who are concerned about how the police force operates in our community. I would like to see numbers of the demographic of our police force and learn about their efforts to hire from within our community. I think it's important for public servants to know the community they serve and reflect the community they serve. Thank you.
Buddy?
I have been fortunate enough to be part of the community police agreement since its inception, back when the first one was drafted up under Chief Ballantyne, and then was also fortunate enough to be part of the second draft that was just done recently last year with Chief Anderson and a group of community members. I am 100% behind the community, the police agreement. I believe in everything that it stands for. It is an accountability document. We have seen it at work over the last few events here that's happened right here in St. Cloud. I was one who was fortunate enough to receive a call and went to the scene and was able to keep peace, in a nice way of saying it, I guess, just keep peace in everything that was happening, from the thing that happened first over the summer with the youth to the recent shooting that just happened at the local gas station. We was able to be there to give our community members the truth. We was able to give them facts. We was able to let them, give them calm, let them know that whatever they was hearing, whatever it was, was not the truth, and that, you know, here's the truth, here's the facts, and please go share that. So I am 100% behind. So I am 100% behind the police agreement. I am not sure the role of City Council, but if elected, I would continue in that role with the Community Police Agreement, if allowed. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you. The role of the City Council. The role of the City Council would be generally to support the Community Policing Agreement, which I do and have. I think we're very fortunate to have people who volunteer their time to make this community better. And as Mr. King had mentioned, recently, in the last few months, they have been a very integral part of keeping the peace in this community. Now with that said, I think we have a police department that is top-notch, well-trained, well-equipped, well-educated, well-led. I'm proud of how they've handled the incidents that we've had in this community. The latest FBI crime statistics show that St. Cloud's crime rate is the lowest it's been since 1989, 31 years. So they're doing, that tells me they're doing a great job. I'm proud of our force, the men and the women, from the very top of the administration down to the office workers and the ticket writers downtown. Thank you.
Hassan?
Thanks so much for the question. Community Police Agreement is there, and personally, I've seen it. But it is not widely known in the community. And there is lack of spearheading it, making sure that it is known within the community very well. When you go to some gatherings, you will see that it is, there is mistrust in the police. People are not aware of this agreement. So we need the city to take a lead. Many times, we hire these police officers. They work for the city. It is the city that pays, we pay 42% of our budget to public safety. Public safety is very, very important. And the mistrust between the police and the community needed to be eliminated by making sure that our police are within the community before anything happens. When everything is peaceful, when the community is well, we need the police to be in the community so that they establish real relationship. And those real relationships will come to help the police and the community when the problem arises. So as a City Council, I think we need to make sure that our police are held accountable and make sure that they work with the community on many levels. Like this Community Agreement, it was not conclusive. And it started almost 20 years ago when there was a research done by St. Cloud State. Thank you.
George?
We have, the Police Department is well-known for its Community Policing Strategy. And the Community Policing Agreement is just one part of it. We have a program on the South Side called the CAP Program. It's a joint program with St. Cloud State, working in that neighborhood and trying to work with the college-age kids primarily. We have a program called CAT, Community Action Team, where we bring in, when it's non-criminal-type activity, it might be mental health, it might be homeless. And we have resources where we join up with our community-based, like Centricare and the Mental Health Clinic in Stearns County. We have the Cop House. We also have the DARE Program in the high school, in the grade school, high school area. And we also have a youth summer camp that the chief puts on. And along with all those programs, we're very proactive. And our Community Policing Agreement is just one step and one sign that we are committed to being a proactive Community Policing type of department. And I think we are well-recognized in the state with that strategy. The St. Cloud Police Department is the largest budget that the city has. It's one of two budgets this year that have a slight increase in it. Our commitment to the Police Department is well-known. Thank you.
Carol?
Technically, the Community Policing Agreement is not a council function. It is a function of administration, police, and the community. We on the council do, by our votes, support the endeavors of the police in this community to function in a Community Policing manner. We have a lot of community outreach, as Georgia's just delineating. We have a lot of community outreach for, like say, for example, the Cop House that was not built with any city funds. It was, but we had to approve the building of it. But it is an asset on the South Side, and it has made a difference in terms of crime level on the South Side. And it is a resource center for many, many people on the South Side. So it's, the Police Department itself is very focused on community outreach. And I think that we, as a council, have been very supportive of that and will continue to be. Thank you.
The next question is, what does defunding the police mean to you? And would you support it? And we're going to start with Carol.
Well, defunding the police means different things to different communities. If we look at Minneapolis, for example, Minneapolis looked like, it was mentioning that they were going to completely do away with the police budget. And I do not approve of that. I do not think that's a very smart idea. And I think they are seeing the after-effects of those ill-timed remarks in the City of Minneapolis right now. I would advise them in the future to suggest, to say that, rather than saying "defunding," that they may want to retrain, refocus the Police Department in other areas and other ways so that it's a much more effective Police Department. I don't think we have the same issues here in the City of St. Cloud. I think that our Police Department is extremely well-run. And I think that we are, we are looked to by our neighboring communities as a leader in, and for example, I talked about Community Policing before. We are a leader in Community Policing. So I think that we have a lot to be proud of in our community. I do not believe in defunding the police. I think perhaps maybe if there is something, retraining. Thank you.
Natalie?
I also do not believe in defunding the police. As I mentioned earlier, feeling safe is a major consideration for people to feel comfortable and safe in a community, especially raising a family. As the other people, candidates here have mentioned, our police force has been doing a great job with programs. I'd like to highlight the Call Response Team, which is amazing, including social workers to help with service calls. Yeah, our police do a wonderful job. I don't, I don't understand the idea to defund the police. And I would never think of that. And yeah, my other consideration, which I brought up earlier, to prevent any problems with maybe racial profiling or things that we're seeing a lot around the nation of concern for black people, I would, again, look at the demographic of our police force and see to it that they are making efforts to hire people who reflect the community and who know our community.
George?
Well, defunding the Police Department doesn't seem to have the same impact here in St. Cloud. There's no reason in my mind that we should even have a discussion about defunding the police. As I indicated before, we have a number of proactive, community-based programs that our Police Department's doing. We do not have a history or a record of de-escalating, problems with de-escalating scenes. We don't have a problem with the use of force. What we may have a little problem that we have to be diligent on is racial profiling. And we should always be careful about that. And we do have training programs, and the police chief and his team work with everybody on the police force to make sure that that's not an issue. But I don't see any reason why we should have a reduction in any kind of funding for our Police Department. As I indicated, our Police Department and our Fire Department almost absorb all the property tax that we collect in the City of St. Cloud in our budget. So we are very committed to it. They do a good job, and we should be proud of them, and we have work to do. But defunding just, it's like speaking a foreign language to me when I'm associating my experiences and my role here and living in St. Cloud. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you. I don't think I'll need all of my time to make my statement. Unlike other candidates that sit at this forum tonight, I in no way would endorse defunding our police or redirecting funds from our Police Department. They do a great job. They are ahead of the curve when it comes to outreach and other forms of interaction with people of color and with the youth. I support the budget increase in our Police Department this year. And I am a total supporter of our Police Department. Thank you.
Hassan?
Thank you so much. To me, police, defunding police means redirecting funds to where it will make its most impact. And unlike other candidates, I do support redirecting funds to where it will make appropriate impact for our community, our youth, before they engage and they need, they need the police. We need to make sure that they are taken care of. I do not believe police responding to welfare checks, for example. I do not believe in police responding to mental health issues. And those funds can be appropriately put into those areas so these mental health issues are taken care of. I do support making sure that our police are trained well and they have enough funds to make sure they do what they have been trained to do. We have, overboarding our police is many issues that they are not trained to do. They are not trained to do mental health. They are not trained to do welfare checks. That's not their job. So we have used, misused our police. And then that misuse has led to mistrust between the communities of color and the police. So that issue can be taken care of by making sure that we do take care of our communities before they need the police. So I do support redirecting funds to appropriate places where it will make our community safer and more prosperous. Thank you so much.
Buddy?
I do not support "defund the police." I do not support "defund the police." What I would like to say, though, is that I support the outreach activities that our Police Department has done. I am a personal witness and have seen the work that comes, the outcomes that comes from working with youth when they're younger. And then when they get older, their interactions are much better. I will not sit here and act as if there is not a problem between the Police Department and the communities of color, and I'll be black-specific. There is a traumatic experience, a history that is there, PTSD, seriously from their environments. And although our Police Department is A1, and I support them 100%, I would not be naive to think that there are none, there's not somebody that doesn't have it all the way figured out. And I believe that is important for us as community members, as we hire our police, that we make sure they are trained, that they have the proper training, that we are supporting our Police Department to assure the proper training is going forward and that they are having the conversations that are needed. And I agree, we are not Minneapolis. And I applaud our Police Department, and I've said this since day one. We are not Minneapolis, and we shouldn't be compared to that. But we should be the example for the state to follow. Thank you.
The next question is, what role can the City Council play, if any, in developing programs to serve the homeless? And Buddy, we're going to start with you.
Okay, what role can the homeless play? What role can the council play in helping the homeless? I have, as part of the community advocate, I have worked with many, many organizations that are helping the homeless. I have went to many homeless camps and given out items, whether it been socks, shoes, underwear, personal items, whatever it was. Had conversations with them, just to kind of find out, why are you, why are we in this situation? What is it as a community? What can we do to help? And a lot of the conversations was interesting that I started to hear. A lot of it is just, it's really basic stuff. They just really need a little help of a hand. They just need a little bit of a push through a door. Some of it is mental illness, but really, most of it is pride. It's just the ability to ask for a little bit of help to get them to the next step. It's the ability to overcome barriers when you're constantly being told, "No, no, 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 no." We talked about the affordable housing thing earlier. You know, if I'm paying $40 every time I'm trying to get into someplace, but I'm constantly being denied, you know, after 10 times, I've already given them $400. We're barely making money. So we have to look at this, look at those things. And as it was mentioned earlier, what federal dollars are out there? What can we do? Can we build, can we take one of these old buildings that we have? And can we utilize it and remodel it into something that we can use for our homeless? Thank you.
Hassan?
Thank you so much. As a community, I think we are judged by how we treat our most weak members of the community. If we have sympathy, if we are kind, we will make sure that nobody will be homeless. We live in the most rich, most prosperous nation in the world, and it is very sad to see some of our community members sleeping outside. I was a teacher at Tech High School, and it hurts me when I see some of my students who slept in a car the previous night. And I will give them their homework and their assignment, and I know they are going to sleep in a car. It is very tough for them to do their homework, to prosper like any other child. I was also at Lincoln Elementary, and I had the same issue, where my students were come to school hungry, they slept in a car. And as a city, I think that should dwell on us when we go to our nice houses, nice beds, and we understand that there are children outside there. And knowing that, and you comfortably sleep, is something that's very difficult to comprehend. And it's time that we wake up and make sure that there is nothing called homelessness in St. Cloud. If we continue the issue to, continue to be there, I don't know how can we call ourselves good citizens of this city. It is time to make sure that our vulnerable community members are taken care of. Thank you.
Carol?
Well, I personally do go to the Salvation Army with my Kiwanis friends. And we make breakfast one Saturday, a quarter for homeless folks. It's a hot breakfast, and they don't generally get a hot breakfast, so it's very well-received. In terms of housing, homelessness is a very complex issue. And unfortunately, it is beyond the scope and the resources of the City Council to solve by itself. Now, when we do have an opportunity, as we did recently with some Community Development Block grant funds that were sent to the city, we did emphasize, you know, homeless helping homeless, getting some funds. Anybody who is providing housing for people got some of the funds. And we just approved another tranche of money for those folks again at our last meeting. uh, for those, uh, folks again at our last meeting. And the other thing is, we need to advocate with our federal representatives, because the money to help solve the, the homeless problem has to come from the federal government. They have the dollars, we really don't have them locally, and we need to advocate with them to help us get this under control.
Natalie?
Um, as I said earlier, it is very difficult to see homelessness in 2020. What the city can do, we can, uh, provide any support, we can. Uh, my idea of offering a volunteer program for families and teens to get involved, I know nonprofits are really working hard to help with the program, any, with, with this community any way they can. I ca, I would call on our business community, again, to give people a chance, give people a chance when they're filling out the applications to get an apartment, maybe they don't have a great credit score. We need to help each other out and see the potential in people, people are struggling. Healthcare is another concern, people are losing everything from, from healthcare bills. I've seen other cities have a mobile healthcare unit, and I would love to, to look into that, to keep everyone healthy and, uh, with access to internet, to look for jobs, or to, to do your online job now that we're in a COVID economy. Uh, so I, I would advocate for any of that help that we can provide as a city, and call on our business leaders to think of each other more than the bottom line.
George?
Well, recently, last six months, the city of St. Cloud through the, as Carol indicated, through the community, community development block grant fund, uh, distributed over $700,000, $730,000 to agencies like Anna Marie's, or Promise Neighborhood, Homeless Helping Homeless, Salvation Army, uh, Place of Hope, Catholic Charities. All of it was to serve people of, uh, low income and homeless. And those are one-time funds, unfortunately, but that's a kind of indication of, when you ask what our council role is, we were very supportive of making sure that money got to the, the people in the greatest need during the COVID, uh, issue. Uh, the HRA, Housing Rehab Authority, has specific programs for homeless and near homeless, uh, people, uh, through their Section 8 voucher program. And we do get opportunities from time to time, uh, through the federal government, uh, to increase the number of vouchers that we do have so that we can serve that population. So we're always trying to do that, uh, and support some of the, uh, projects that are, have been built in, say, the last 10 years for people that are near homeless or, or homeless themselves. We can be advocates, and we can work hard at this area. It's a very difficult one, everybody, uh, I think would agree, so, uh, but we're always working at it. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Linda. The city of St. Cloud does not, as a community, uh, provide social services. The Stearns County provides the social services to the residents of the city of St. Cloud. With that said, we do have opportunities to be supportive of the groups that do try to handle the homeless situations and, and help those people. The community development COVID funds that were mentioned here tonight were prioritized to deal with those in most need, and that would deal and spend the money in the best way possible to provide services for those people. As was stated earlier, the HRA does have programs, um, dealing with, with homeless of all differing, uh, populations. We recently provided a challenge to our director of the HRA to find a way to house homeless youth. Uh, of course, COVID has slowed that process. We also, uh, are supporting the alair apartments which deal with homeless veterans. Thank you.
And the next question is, do you think the city budget will be adequate to keep up with needed repairs and improvements to streets and water and sewer services? And what are the priorities? And Jeff, we're gonna start with you.
Can you repeat the question, Linda? Priorities of what?
Certainly. Do you think the city budget will be adequate to keep up with needed repairs and improvements to streets and water and sewer service, services? And what are the priorities? What would your priorities be?
Well, um, certainly some projects that were slated to happen in the next year or two have been delayed. Uh, we did accomplish three major projects this year, which, considering, um, the lack of funding for, uh, for, that the city, um, is dealing with, I think that was a pretty good accomplishment. Sewer and water services, of course, will provide those, it's a public safety issue. So there will always be a way to make that work. Uh, we talked about, um, going to the legislature to, uh, raise our sales tax, to be able to fund road projects. And that, again, because of COVID, we, we delayed taking that to the legislature, but that's an option that we have talked about, and I think it's an option that we probably will use in the future, and I'd be supportive of that. We, we certainly do have, uh, some road issues. Our latest APO study showed that, um, St. Cloud has 2% of our local roads in good or excellent condition. So we certainly do have some work to do. Thank you.
George?
Well, as I indicated before, a council member can't be one-dimensional, and, and when you look at the budget, you have to look at it from a taxpayer standpoint, and, and, uh, the amount of money we, we generate. Uh, again, an example is our police and fire departments cost us as much money as we bring in in property tax. We have a $75 million, uh, tax levy budget, so obviously we get revenues from different areas to help support all the other programs. But, um, every year or every few years, the mayor does a survey, uh, a community-based survey, and to help identify what are the priorities of the community. And usually, they come out with safety, public safety, police-fire inspections, uh, roads and traffic are usually the ones that always surface to the top. We have an obligation to provide core services like clean water, sewer, and, and roads. And, and do we have an adequate amount in the budget? No. We, we just don't. It, we never have an adequate amount in the budget to do everything we want to do. But we, uh, we do have very clean water, we have a very safe community, and we do, uh, some very good fiscal things in our budget to make sure that we're not, uh, a burden on the taxpayers. So we try to use our money as wisely as we can, and we try to address the core services that are, we, you know, are asked of us as, as leaders of, of the city. Thank you.
Buddy?
As, as both, uh, councilmen, Hantos and Geiger, has pointed out, the, the COVID has really played a big part in budget, and, um, I had an opportunity to kind of look over it, and I watched this year and, as they went through it. So I'm not very familiar with the whole process, other than the, the part that I saw. What I would say, though, what is absolutely needed, and, and I believe that Councilman Geiger kind of spoke to this already, is we need to find a way to figure out how to get our roads intact. Um, it is, it is a big problem, and I don't care who you talk to, from wherever you're at, there, our roads are hard, and it, and we need to figure out how can we maintain that, or how can we betterly, better fix that, and stop band-aiding them, and actually go ahead and fix it. Um, I'm not, I'm, I'm also thinking we should put some of that money in public safety into some of our inspectors. I think if there is a way, as we talk about housing, as we talk about rentals, um, if there's a way that our inspectors can do a better job of holding some of our, own, some of the housing owners responsible for some of the, the wear and tear of the way the property look, and not keeping up with it, and, and those kind of things, um, I believe those are little things that we can do, that hopefully the, that we can find place from the budget to work through. Thank you.
Carol?
Um, in the city, we have, um, when the Great Recession of 2008 happened, parks and roads took the biggest hit, parks and recreation and roads. And those budgets really have not come back. Um, when, uh, let's see, when I first joined the council, there was a levy for about three years to try and catch up, um, some of the road construction that had been, uh, cut away during that Great Recession. Um, we are trying, we've been trying to, you know, keep up, and we've put more and more money into roads until now with COVID, we've had to pull back again. And so it's like, you, you know, take one step forward and two steps back. We get as many grants as we can, we, we work as hard as we can to, you know, to keep up, but it's, it's really, um, a slow-going process, because every time we turn around, some, there's another budget cut. I would like to see us do another levy after this COVID is resolved. I would like to see us do another levy for a discreet amount of time, say maybe five years, and I don't know how many, uh, million dollars per year, but to, to dedicate it only to roads, because, um, we can't keep falling behind like we have. It is not safe. So, thank you very much.
Natalie?
Yes, this, the city budget is a struggle, um, especially with COVID. Streets, I, I think are, are number one. We do have to continue to provide our citizens with clean water, our famous clean water of St. Cloud. Sewer, sewer repairs are also very important. But I, even if it does cost a lot and put us into debt, I really think we should push for, for maintaining our streets, our infrastructure, infrastructure gives long-term benefits. Everyone is not happy with, with, uh, our streets. I would love to tour, tour these places where, um, these resources come out of, to see, you know, meet with the street workers, what are their struggles, how can we help them? What problems are their, are they facing? Is it just money? And I approve, I think raising a sales tax to improve the roads, I think that's a great idea, and, and that will help. But, yes, that's it. Thank you for the question.
Hassan?
Uh, thank you for the question. Infrastructure is, is very important, it's the engine that drives the economy, it's the engine that drives any successful, uh, democracies. And, uh, I think we need to take into account, uh, the issue of COVID, yes, but I think our roads are not as they should be, like the councilman, uh, George, uh, Groger said, that 2% only are in excellent condition. That's really, really bad. And, uh, when I drive a lot, and, uh, from places to place, and I see the roads are not really, uh, the way they are supposed to be, and I will support any ideas that will prioritize our roads. Sewer and water, they are very important, they are essential, and, uh, usually we have to take care of those regardless of our budget issues. And there is always not enough, uh, money to take care of the things we want to take care of, but I think we should, uh, leverage our federal legislatures and the state legislatures to make sure that this becomes an issue that is repeated in the years, and they see it so that, uh, when, uh, there is availability of funds, they know that we should be locked at this issue. So yes, uh, our infrastructure is in, very important, and we should take care of it. Thank you so much.
The next question is, what do you see as the future for the Whitney Senior Center? And we're gonna start with Carol.
Well, this is right up my alley, um, because I am a gerontologist, I have a master's in gerontology, and I believe, um, senior centers were started by the federal government back in the, um, late 60s and early 70s, um, because seniors were, uh, holed up in their homes and had no place to go. I believe that Whitney Senior Center does serve a wonderful purpose for people to, to gather, and, um, it does help in terms of providing meals, um, for seniors. They have a huge kitchen there, and they, they do, do the meals on wheels, and they have a congregate dining site, so that people who have, uh, need can have a, a low-cost meal. Um, and there are also all kinds of activities, um, dances and classes and, um, you name it, there's a lot going on at Whitney at all the times. So I, I think that it is a gem in our community. I believe that we, uh, need to continue to support it. The federal funding has gone away a long time ago, but we still need to have something in our community for our older residents, so we don't go back in time to where they were not able to get out of their homes and feel comfortable going to someplace where they could meet their, their fellow, uh, citizens. Thank you.
Buddy?
Whitney Senior Center is, um, a place that I frequented a lot before it was closed down. I think the thing I love the most about it is the interaction that you see, the opportunity for the seniors to be social with, with each other, the opportunity to see them playing pickleball, which is the coolest game ever that I just learned, um, the opportunity to see them eating, as Councilman Lewis has spent, spoken of already, the opportunity to see them just enjoying and smiling and doing classes, there's yoga classes, and all these other things that are offered there. And I think that, um, as a city, we, we have the obligation to make sure that they have that place. And I know with COVID, it has been extremely difficult, but I believe that as we start to think about, and as we learn more, um, about this COVID, and as we learn more about the pandemic and how it affects us, and vaccinations and all these other things, I believe that if we can just create opportunities for them to come back and enjoy those things, and give them opportunities to come back and not be stuck in their houses, or stuck in their homes, or worried about this, or worried about that, but create a safe space so they can interact, so they can be social. So when you get into those years, you can enjoy retirement in a real different kind of a way. Thank you.
Natalie?
I think it's really great that we have a, a senior center in St. Cloud. My mother frequents her senior center in, in Milwaukee. Uh, it's an opportunity to, to meet friends. We have great education programs at our senior center, and an art gallery that I participated in, so it's a, a great resource for that community to, um, participate in numerous things. Also, they have an awesome wood shop, so I, I am happy we have it, and I see its future potential to continue to blossom and serve that group of our community.
Jeff?
I believe that the future of Whitney Senior Center is, is, is bright. Um, it's a city facility that, um, is funded through the city budget. We have, as a, as a city, as a city council, supported efforts, um, to do some remodeling projects there through the CDBG, uh, funding through the federal government. We have supported the, uh, new kitchen facility for, for Whitney, uh, new roof on Whitney, some dividers. new roof on Whitney, some dividers. There's, there are all of the the senior activities that I think have been spoken about tonight already. But there's also several other programs that run out of the Whitney Center. It's tough there now, like it is for everything else in the world, it seems like. But I think the Whitney Center will come back stronger than ever, and and it's it's vital to the seniors in this community, as was stated before. Interaction is is what creates vitality in a in the senior community. So I think it's a it's it's a great facility, and I think it's something that I and the council will continue to support.
Hassan?
Thank you so much. I'm not a senior, but I do go there. And sometimes I go there with some youth from Iqra Education Center for basketball. And actually, in the Somali community, people don't call Whitney Senior Center with any Whitney Senior Center. We call it Eid prayer place, where we go there for prayers. So when we want to direct people to that place, we just say the place where we pray Eid. So it is very popular within the Somali community, and it is vital for our seniors and for every senior, wherever whoever they are. And it serves a great purpose in congregation, where people congregate there, not only for seniors, but for young people as well. So I will support anything that will viralize it, that will make it very reachable, accessible, and make sure that all the services they provide is maintained and increased if if possible. Thank you so much.
George?
Well, Whitney is Senior Center is another example of a high-quality program that state recognized the facility. We should all be very proud of. A number of people use it that do not live in St. Cloud and the surrounding areas. The word adequate in terms of funding is about as far as we can go, because really, it it probably deserves more funding and more opportunities to bring more people in would would happen if we had a little more money for it. But we're doing the best we can. Many years, the the, we didn't have a fee for membership at Whitney, and it was controversial when it came up a few years ago. And what we did was we discounted the rate for St. Cloud residents, because again, for many, many years, St. Cloud taxpayers paid for the the facility, even though non-St. Cloud residents were able to use it. And trying to be a good neighbor comes into play in terms of our relationship with other cities around us. But at the same time, it creates a problem for taxpayers of St. Cloud to support. It's a wonderful program. I think everybody's committed to making it work and to keep it funded as best we can. And I know they get some grant money from time to time as well. But yeah, it's it's got a great future, I think. Thank you.
We have reached the end of our time for questions, and we'll begin closing statements. You will each have one minute to summarize why you believe your qualifications are well-matched with the requirements of being a city council member. And we are going to start with George.
Well, thank you again for having having us here tonight. I've always prided myself as being approachable to all our residents and a a voice for the residents of St. Cloud. I've been an advocate for sound fiscal spending. I'm independent, nonpartisan, and I'm willing to say no when appropriate. I'm very hardworking. I do my homework. I ask questions, and I hold the administration accountable to the public. I have been a leading advocate for our city's neighborhoods. Through the Neighborhood Best Practice Committee, I initiated the reorganization of the Housing Rehab Authority, which led to the creation of the city's Economic Development Authority, allowing the HRA to strengthen their focus on housing for low-income residents. I founded the St. Cloud Area Sustainability Committee, working to increase the city's use of renewable energy sources. I was I was recognized and received an award from the from the mayor. So if elected, I'll pledge to continue to do the hard work for the residents of St. Cloud. Thank you.
Hassan?
Hi, thank you, Women Leagues, for sponsoring this. Thank you, Linda. I, my name is Hassan Youssef again, and I have very good listening skills. I like to listen and make sure that I understand the issues that our city's residents are facing. I want to hold our administration accountable. I want to make sure that our city is transparent. Our community participates in the in the budget process in running of our city. And I'm here. I'll be here for our communities. I want to represent everyone and so that everyone can be on the table, at the table, when the decisions are being made for our city. I want our council to represent our population. And thank you for your support. Thank you for everything. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. Thank you.
Jeff?
Well, again, thank you for having us. My name is Jeff Gerger. I have served on the city council for several years. I have experience through that. I'm not a rah-rah type of guy. I'm more of a thinker. I study the issues. I try to facilitate our meetings in a way that they're civil. I have earned the respect of the city council, my colleagues, by being elected by them as president of the city council several times, an honor that I that I take very seriously. I've served on the Planning Commission, the HRA Board of Directors, the Paramount Board, several other things that I think give me some qualifications that are important, especially at this time when we're facing some some real ugly realities in this community. I support often, but I thank you again, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Natalie?
I thank the League of Women Voters for offering this opportunity as an even playing field. I haven't had a lot of time to campaign as I work 10 hours a day working for a school bus company. I offer a unique voice to St. Cloud. 70% of our population is under the age 44, and I am 42 years old. 48% of our population is female. And right now, we just have Carol. I represent a mixed-race family. I'm a white Catholic artist married to a brown Hindu economist. I'm raising two awesome girls in this community going to tech and south high junior high with great challenging curriculum. I'm very happy. My my family back in Milwaukee is half Democrat, half Republican. I think I can be a unique unifying voice that St. Cloud needs. Thank you.
Buddy?
I've been in part of this community for the last 18 years. I have been part of many boards. I'm part of the CM Central Minnesota Arts Board. I am part of the Park and Rec Advisory Board right here for the city. I'm also part of the Great River Children's Museum, which is opening soon. I'm also part of the Children's Advocacy Center, and I can go on and on in all the different leadership roles I have I have taken on. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this time, for this opportunity. I want to thank all the candidates, and I've had a great time today. And as we think about the 100 years that the League of Women Voters share, as 100 years since the 19th Amendment to have the right to vote, and we have noticed that it has been the women that has been the push. And I just want to leave with the one question is, how how do we involve more African-American women to be part of the League of Women Voters? Thank you.
Carol?
In closing, I just wanted to say thank you again to the League and to Linda Saup as moderator. That's a tough job. It was only 100 years ago, this August, that women became able to vote for the first time. I'm hoping that the viewers of this program have gained insight into the candidates and can make an informed decision. You know me. I've been here all my life. I have served on the Board of Education and now on the city council. I'm finishing up my eighth year. You know what to expect from me. And I'm I'm going to close by asking for your vote, either by absentee or Election Day on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you to the members of the general public for emailing questions. Thank you to each of the candidates for running for public office and for participating in this forum. Thank you to the city of St. Cloud for the use of this room. A link to a recording of this event will be posted on the League of Women Voters' St. Cloud area website, l w v s c a dot org. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the sponsor. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the sponsor of any of the candidates. Now it's up to the voters. I hope you continue to become informed about candidates and issues. Let your voices be heard by voting. Candidates, good luck on November 3rd.